Welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by Pastor Brian Rice from Christ the King Lutheran Church at seventy-three oh eight, South Forty-second Street. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city and every city, in your own image, with dignity and infinite worth. We give thanks tonight for these, your servants, our mayor, city staff, council members. We give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take upon behalf of all of us here. We pray for the, for civil discourse and wise decision makings of the city council. We pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives are connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and then act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person. And Lord, as we give thanks, we do so knowing that many who serve our city are mourning. We grieve the passing of Officer Christopher Abbott. We give thanks for his many years of service. As his family spends this Thanksgiving Day with an empty chair at the table, let your presence and your comfort be known. Send your Holy Spirit to lead his family through their grief, that they may be healed and restored to joy. And for all who are missing someone this holiday season, give courage and faith. And assure in certain hope in your loving care that casting all their sorrow on you, they may have strength for the days ahead. We thank you again for all who work for the good of Bellevue, especially those who often receive little thanks and whose work often goes unnoticed. We thank you for all who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Rice. Before I go to roll call, I'd like to just, I want to thank Pastor Rice for, for praying with us with about Christopher Abbott's passing. I also want to read a, just a short little history of Officer Abbott. Really one of our great officers and a face of this community. Just going to read a little excerpt from social media that Bellevue Police Department posted. The Bellevue Police Department is saddened to announce the passing of Officer Christopher Abbott. Officer Abbott unexpectedly passed away today. This was November eighteenth after suffering a medical emergency. Officer Abbott served as an officer for the Bellevue Public, Bellevue Police Department for over twenty-two years. Officer Abbott started as a road patrol officer, but was a member of the department's special services unit, which is commonly referred to as our community policing unit, since two thousand nine. Officer Abbott was known for being hardworking, always willing to help anyone, and a dedicated husband, father, and friend. Officer Abbott enjoyed cheering for the Iowa State Cyclones, attending the College World Series, but most importantly, he loved being a dad to his two sons and husband to his high school sweetheart. We are heartbroken at this loss, both for his family, friends, and our agency. Please keep all those that knew Officer Abbott in your thoughts and prayers. And his badge number was number one sixty-five. And just, we'll take just a couple of seconds for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Casey, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any request. Item ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, an application for a Class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Off sale only for Wizard Pipes and Glass LLC, doing business as Wizard Pipes and Glass, located at fifteen oh five Galvin Road South, Suite Five, Bellevue, Nebraska, and John C. McCurcher as the manager. And I will open up the public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience by chance? Okay. If just, if you can say something if you want. In other words, you're here for questions. Appreciate you coming out. Again, the open, the public hearing is open, so if there's anyone wanting to speak regarding the liquor license on ten A, please come forward. Any questions from the council for the applicant? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McCurcher, could you come up?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us a little bit how long have you had this business open? I think it's now currently called Wizard Pipes and Glass?
We've been open since August of two thousand fourteen, so coming up on ten years.
Okay. And what you're doing is you're asking for off sale permit, which will only allow you to sell alcohol liquor as customers will have to leave. They cannot drink it on site.
That's correct, sir.
Do you have a drive-through?
We do not, sir.
Do you plan on ever putting a drive-through there?
No, sir. I know the building won't allow.
And are you, so you're, you're right down the street, you're in the strip mall, right across the street from Taco Bell Kentucky Fried Chicken?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you expanding that business? Are you taking more room, more space in the business? You're not? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. And public hearing's still open. Anybody else want to speak regarding ten A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, an application for a Class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and dispel distilled spirits. Off sale only for Wizards and Pipes and Glass LLC, doing business as Wizard Pipes and Glass, located at fifteen oh five Galvin Road South, Suite Five, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight zero zero five, and John C. McCurcher as manager.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Okay, I've got four yes votes and one no vote with Councilman Casey voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption. Third reading, we have none this evening. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four one three five, compensation ordinance is updated. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Just a sec. Kind of got ahead of myself. Ordinance number four one three five, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance forty-one thirty-four, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we had a request, Councilman Cook?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think it's for a public hearing. I was going to make a motion, but it's. Public hearing first? Or should I make the motion?
But you can do it. Excuse me, you can do it either way.
Okay. I, I'm going to make a motion. We approve ordinance number four one three five, and then I would like to make an amendment.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment that we, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules, hold the public hearing tonight, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister to amend. Any comments or questions? Please vote on the amendment. After.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. So now we have a motion by Cook, second by Preister to. Actually, we're going to open the public hearing now. Yep, sorry. So we will open the public hearing for item twelve A. Is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four one three five? Please come forward. Just state your name, address, and sign in, please.
I'm doing that right now, Mr. Mayor. Hang on just a second. I can't talking right at the same time.
Got it.
My name's Kyle Roan. I live at nineteen oh eight Madison Street. I've looked at this ordinance offline and with, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but with Mr. Cook wanting to suspend the rules, want to remind the council and our fellow citizens that we've increased our spending by forty-two percent this year, at much to the chagrin of most of the citizens, and it was voted in affirmative by all of you. These expenses are going to be ongoing expenses, things that we cannot take back once it's proved. So I would ask, well, it's too late. You're going to vote on it. I try to get done speaking, but I think that city expenses should be taken into account and the fact that sales tax and property taxes are soon to be voted on. I'm pretty sure that's going to happen at some point. So just something for you to be aware of, that the citizens of this county and of this city are really becoming weary of all the taxes that you're putting on us. So just, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And any questions from the council? Okay, we have a motion by Cook, second by Preister to approve twelve A as amended, as just amended. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve B, ordinance number four one three six, request to rezone tax lot seven B three A three, located in the northwest quarter of section thirty-five, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from B N H to R D sixty for the purpose of an existing single-family residence. Applicant Barney Barrett, location two zero zero four Harland Drive. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance number four one three six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number forty-one oh four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about to two zero zero four Harland Drive, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll open up twelve B, ordinance number four one three six for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak regarding twelve B? Anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve B? Okay, I do know the applicants in the audience. So is there a council member that would like have any questions for the applicant while the public hearing's open? Okay, anybody want to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be December fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item twelve C, ordinance number four one three seven, request to rezone lot two Southdale from B N H to R G twenty-eight for the purpose of multifamily residential development. Applicant H A Wassenberg Holding Company LLC, general location, South Twenty-ninth Avenue and Cape Heart Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one three seven, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number forty-one oh four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about South Twenty-ninth Avenue and Cape Heart Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And I will open up twelve C for a public hearing, if there's anyone wanting to speak.
Good evening. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rumble Ledkey Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, H A Wassenberg Holding Company, in support and to ask your support of this change of zone from B N H Commercial to R twenty-eight zoning. I would note that this was recommended approval by the city of Bellevue Planning Department, as well as unanimously recommended approval by the city of Bellevue Planning Commission. So first, to start out with, with the property. This lot, as was stated, is located at South Twenty-ninth and Cape Heart Road. It's currently zoned B N H Commercial. This lot was originally platted in nineteen sixty-three and has been vacant since that time. This lot is surrounded by multifamily on the south, commercial to the east. There is single-family residential to the west, which is separated with a, really a natural buffer of a nice, a drainage way that creates a natural buffer. And then there's more residential on the north. That's on the north side of Cape Heart Road. And I would note that this property does not have frontage on Cape Heart Street. This property was, thank you for bringing up the map. This property was acquired in two thousand twenty-two by the applicant with the idea of potential future multifamily residential development. This applicant is an affiliate of Losco Inc., a company that owns and manages several resident, several apartment buildings in the Omaha, Lincoln, and Bellevue area, including the Southdale multifamily residential that is just south of this project. This change, I do want to note that this change of zone is the first step in this process, that there is no currently established timeline for an actual build-out of this property. That timing is going to depend on several factors. Right now, like I said, we have no anticipated timeline. So while in your packet, you do have a conceptual site plan, what's in front of you is not approval of that site plan that was provided as a, just a concept of what could be done with this zoning approval. It is not, it's something that the details of that would be, have to be approved at the time of building permit. Let's see. I would note that a traffic study was submitted with this application. This traffic study was reviewed by the city of Bellevue Public Works, Public Works Department, who noted that there were no major impacts to traffic in this area based on this development. Now, a large reason for that is like I noted, this property is generally, right now, is zoned for commercial uses, and we're asking for R twenty-eight residential zoning, that is medium-density residential zoning, which generally is a much lower trip generator than commercial development. I understand that there have been questions about whether the intersection at Twenty-eighth and Cape Heart Road was studied as part of that traffic analysis. We'll note that it was, that the traffic analysis showed that there would be at build-out, that this would not merit a signal, a signal would not be warranted at either Twenty-eighth and Cape Heart or Twenty-ninth and Cape Heart Road. That right now, there is at Twenty-eighth and Cape Heart Road, northbound, there's in the morning, there's level of service is at D, so that's on the scale of A through F. In the morning, it's at D. In the afternoon, peak time, it's at C. That warrants a right turn lane that is currently there. And that to the extent, so that is the analysis on the intersection at Twenty-eighth Street and Cape Heart Road, and then to the extent that this project would raise traffic concerns in the staff, the report provided to the council, Public Works Department has stated that they're comfortable addressing those at the time there would actually be a building permit. So with that, I, we are very excited about the future prospects for this property. We would appreciate, we appreciate the planning department's recommendation of approval, the planning commission's unanimous recommendation of approval. We'd appreciate the council's support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Anne, and obviously, I had some questions about the Twenty-eighth Avenue and Cape Heart, because I just live south there a little ways. I don't know if I would consider it a right-turning lane. There's only one lane that goes to the stop sign, but once you make a right, there's a lane that you can merge into. It's not like two vehicles can pull up and both proceed to turn. And my only concern of, of bringing that up to staff, number one is I wanted to make sure that the traffic study did include that.
Certainly.
I can tell you that I have spent hundreds and probably thousands of times of sitting there, maybe three, four cars back and sit there for a while. A lot of people are shooting across that Southdale Plaza to go to Twenty-ninth Avenue and come up to Cape Heart Road. So it wasn't so much, should we make an improvement at Twenty-eighth Avenue and Cape Heart, which I think would be very difficult with existing business there. It was more or less, would we maybe down the road have to do something at Twenty-ninth Avenue before the southwest, southeast corner was developed to maybe actually create a true second lane coming up to Cape Heart Road where they could go off left, they could go straight or go right. So it is, it is an issue. I just don't know how much the apartment complex would really add to that. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Casey?
Thanks for your presentation. I had some questions, and you answered most of those during the planning commission meeting. I appreciate that. And I had the same concerns that, that Councilman Cook had. I guess my only other question would be, did, did you receive or are you aware of any feedback from the restaurant, Little Borough, next to this property? And subsequent to that, I saw this property actually kind of circles around behind Little Borough. It looked like in your tentative site plan that you weren't planning on doing anything there. Is that true?
We have not received any comment from Little Borough on this. I know that in line with, in line with requirements of city code and zoning, that notices would have gone out, and we did not receive any comments on that. And so, so yes, that this is a conceptual, this is a conceptual site plan at this point that could change between, change within the requirements of the zoning code by the time we actually got to build out.
So, so it is possible down the road, something could happen behind, that little strip behind Little Borough?
I think, well, it would be very tough to put a building there and still allow for the parking and setbacks that would be required for this project. I know that as of now, we're even anticipating, with our very preliminary engineering, we're even anticipating that any stormwater detention would be on the south end of this site due to the grade of the property. So that's to say, I can never say never, but I would say it'd be very difficult to do much of a build-out on that north side behind Little Borough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just a concept drawing. It's, there's nothing planned.
Correct.
Like this building, okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming out. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding twelve C, which is ordinance number four one three seven? Please come forward. Seeing nobody else, I will close the public hearing for twelve C. I guess I just, I I wanna state it now. I know we're coming to third reading next, next time, but um. I think our administration has been asked to use caution when we're changing. Zoning from business to any kind of residential. Uh, just for the fact that we don't have a lot of business zoning left in Bellevue. So. I think this is one of those cases where the property sits down below. Uh, Cape Hart Road, visible, visibility is a little tough. Um. So I I think this is one that actually. Uh, makes sense. So I I just wanted to put that out there. I think the planning commission sees that as well. Any other comments? Uh, third reading will be December fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading thirteen A ordinance number four one three eight. Sewer rate ordinance increase. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four one three eight. An ordinance to amend Section thirty dash one three seven. Of the Bellevue Municipal Code establishing minimum monthly sewer charges. For residential and commercial users in the city of Bellevue. To repeal Section thirty dash one thirty-seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code. As heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be December fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A approval of event application for Green Line Running Event. To hold the American Heroes Half Marathon and Five K on Saturday, May twenty-sixth. Two thousand twenty-four from six A M to eleven thirty A M along Keystone Trail, starting and ending at Hayworth Ballpark Fields. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? On fourteen A, please come forward. State your name, address, and please sign in.
Good evening. My name is Joe Ramos. Um, I live at uh five zero zero three Clearwater Drive in Bellevue. And I am here, as stated, here to seek approval for hosting a half marathon and five K. In Hayworth Park, uh, at the ball fields going along Keystone Trail on the twenty-sixth of May. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? I think I have a dental appointment that morning, so I won't be there, so.
Well, we can roll it to the next day if you want. It's a Sunday. I don't know any dentists that are open on Sunday, but. Nice try, Mayor.
Uh, public hearing is open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
Thank you. I move that we approve the event application for Green Line Running Event, uh, for the Green Line Running Event. To hold the American Heroes Half Marathon and Five K on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four from six A M to eleven thirty A M. Along Keystone Trail, uh, starting and ending at Hayworth Park Ballfields.
Second.
Motion by Burn, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope to see all of you there.
Thanks. Item fifteen resolutions, uh, none this evening. Item sixteen, current business sixteen A. Authorize the purchase of stainless steel spreaders and snowplow blades for the street department's new trucks. In an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. We approve Agenda item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Dave, you might be able to answer all these questions, and I think some of these are gonna overlap with. Um, but I just wanna make sure that um. Are these replacing blades and spreaders? Is that? I guess I just want a little more justification. Um, do you know what I mean? Or are these like simply? Uh, blades and sp- and then I think it's two spreaders for the. Specific to the Ford F five fifty trucks. That's next on our.
Uh, yes, the uh, some of them may be mounted on those, but usually our blades and spreaders when, when we're done with them, they're. They're salvaged, uh, or you know, not salvaged, but they're surplus and. Cause they're in pretty poor condition by the time we finished with them, because it's a pretty rough environment that they operate in. Uh, all of the items, excuse me, that we have on tonight to answer your further question, uh, will all be surplus out. The 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 equipment that we have, and then these are replacements for what we've salvaged or what we will salvage out or sell essentially.
So, okay, so for example, like, just hypothetically, if. If we didn't have these, would that have a negative impact on on snow removal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so we are like replacing.
Yeah, so let's say we have ten. I don't know the exact number. Once we replace them, we will still have ten, but we'll just have two new ones.
Okay, so um, okay, that answers my questions, and I'll probably have more questions as we, we go through these next couple of items.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on sixteen A? Okay, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Uh, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B authorize the purchase of five two thousand twenty-four Ford trucks. For the street department in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Which is sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars each. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
I'll make motion to approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, Dave, I just wanna ask, um, okay, so these are replacing vehicles. So we're replacing. Five other trucks, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and and those trucks are absolutely, I mean, as I, they're just. I mean, what are you basing it on? Yeah.
Yeah, we will be trading off or surplusing off, not trading, surplusing off five vehicles.
Okay, so that just means that you're gonna sell those vehicles?
Yes.
And then we're replacing them. Okay, then how do you guys determine when to surplus vehicles?
Uh, well, we, the Fleet Maintenance Department, uh, you know, they keep records of the vehicles and you know, they keep costs of, you know, maintenance. And when you get to a certain tipping point, uh, and some of them are just to the old, the old, the age. And uh, the wear and tear that's on them, uh, you know, we kind of visually like you would trade off a vehicle in your personal life. And I would add that these vehicles were in last year's budget and were actually. Uh, sought after in the state bid, but the time supply lines forced them into this year's uh, budget year.
Okay, so then, can you, I really, I'm asking these just, just for, I I think also just to inform. And I also think, you know, if you add this up, I mean, with the next couple of purchases will be at half a million dollars in in vehicles, so. Um, I just feel like sometimes in these that it's very sparse. It just says, you know, purchase these vehicles and there's no real. You know, this is what we're replacing, here's why. So that's why I'm asking these questions. Um. But like, how do you determine to, so for example, when you say wear and tear, is that like a certain mileage? Is that? Do you know what I mean? How old are those vehicles?
It's, it's not necessarily a miles. It's, it's, it's how much, I shouldn't say abuse, but how much use the vehicle has gotten. So when we put heavy loads on these, like these five F five fifties will be, uh, we put heavy loads. Uh, we, you know, they're on the asphalt crew, they're on the concrete crew, and they're putting heavy objects on them. So that, that does put wear and tear on them, and they're also out during snowstorms, et cetera. Uh, so, you know, every vehicle is a little different, you know, some uh, have less maintenance problems than others. And so when it, when we get to this cost point where it's costing us a lot of money in repairs. It's gonna be time and 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 to reiterate in my last statement, they actually were in last year's budget. So it kind of falsely inflates uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget a little bit, because. If the supply lines had been better, they would have been purchased last year.
Okay, and then um, the only other question that I have to is, is so you're just saying that basically like. It, the cost of the maintenance that we'd be putting in our vehicles now that we're gonna surplus, um. We'd be dumping more money into those vehicles, trying to fix them versus just buying new vehicles, is that?
Yeah, we, you know, we set forth, you know, a yearly projection. You know, we wanna replace four pickups next year. We wanna replace two tractors, et cetera. And then when you get to that point, you assess that, those vehicles. And you assess the, the age on them and, well, what salvage value they might have. And then you start looking at, well, should we actually replace the five as we projected four years ago? Or can we get by with three or et cetera? But a lot of it is really dependent on whether their useful life is uh. Being taken up, because sometimes it costs you more to keep them than it does to replace them.
Yeah, so and yeah, and that's what I was kind of wondering. So then the other questions that I have are. So if we didn't purchase new vehicles and we just maintained the vehicles that we'd be replacing. Would, would city staff potentially be at risk or, you know what I mean? If for some reason, like, the wear and tear is just so bad that it's actually dangerous to drive those vehicles in those conditions? Um, does that make?
No, I I understand what you're saying. I mean, they're not dangerous to to operate, otherwise they'd be taken out of service immediately at that point. Would you, we try to do this so we avoid what you had said, so that two years, three years, four years, we're not looking at five million dollars worth of equipment that we need to replace. Because it's, it's all becoming uh obsolete at once. Uh, so you try to stay a little bit ahead of that curve when you, when you're purchasing vehicles.
So it's like a, it's rotation, so that way when we get down the line, we're not all of a sudden in a big jam and trying to replace a bunch of vehicles, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, okay, and then just last question. If we didn't purchase these vehicles, would that negatively impact? Our ability as a city to um, do snow removal or other functions?
I don't know that I would say negatively. It would negatively affect our budgets in the future, because at a certain point. You know, we will have to make that purchase. Uh, could we limp them through another year or get through another year with them? Yes. Uh, but if one of them should break down, let's say during a snowstorm. Uh, we, then it would negatively impact us. I'm not saying that would happen. But uh, the older you get and the more wear and tear you have, the, you know, the likelihood increases.
Okay, so, no, I really appreciate you asking, answering my questions, so.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? Sixteen B, we have motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C authorize the purchase of Freightliner one fourteen S D plus. For the street department in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item sixteen C.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
So, and just to keep, just prepared, I'm probably gonna ask just the very last time on the, the next i- item. Can you just explain this to me and maybe just, you know, tell me. What we utilize this vehicle for, what it's for, is it replacing something that, that sort of like, what's the, the need?
It's replacing the existing, basically it's a tractor. Uh, that semi-tractor, and then the next item on the agenda is the trailer, a lowboy trailer. And we, we move our large equipment from project site to project site or shops. Uh, with these trailers, things that are too heavy to put, let's say, on a trailer behind a pickup or a, or in the bed of a pickup. Uh, we load them onto this, and then they're transported to uh, the site that they're needed at.
Okay, and then is this, are we doing the same thing? Are we replacing an old?
Yes.
Trailer in an old?
Yes, and they will be surplus out as well.
Okay, and then is that for the same reasons, just with the wear and tear?
Yes.
And is this the only one that we have, or do we have multiple?
Just one.
Just one? So this gets all our city equipment from. You know, point A to point B throughout the city?
Yeah, anything that's heavier than what you can put behind a, like a pickup truck on a trailer. Yeah, or in a dump truck goes, goes on the flatbed.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a comment. It's expensive running a city. It's expensive buying these pieces of equipment. But I think the management is well established. That if we wait and let them break down in the middle of winter and the high stress, we end up impacting service. But we also can endanger people with big vehicles being stuck out in a snowstorm. So I think the system that we have that spaces out the finances and the costs. The system that looks at and assesses not only how many miles, how many hours on the engine. But the conditions, the worst of conditions in the coldest of weather, under the greatest of loads. And with the most stress and challenge, sometimes going twenty-four hours a day. From one driver to the next, those trucks are out there making sure we can all get to work the next day. Just like our police and fire are out there as backup. And we need to make sure the s- safety and security of the public is there. Do we wanna spend all this money? Do we like having high taxes? And I don't know that our taxes are high. The mayor's pointed out many times that we are one of the. If, no, I think we are the lowest city in, in the area. So, we do assess, we have a good maintenance department that makes recommendations. And our public works director, I think, has done a very good job. And for the safety of the public, for balancing the budget from multi-years. I think it is good that we, when we reach this point. We make the decision and we do get replacement vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cook?
And I, I appreciate Don and Tom, so I agree with you guys a hundred percent in the questions you're asking, comments you're making. But one big thing with our community too is we got off it here. And we gotta get people to work in and out. Not only that, but then you just look at the general fire, police, the emergency services that we provide. But with that base out there, something happens, people gotta get there, is very critical. But um, I, I will just give you a, a couple of things here about the vehicles we're replacing. The lowboy trailer is replacing a nineteen seventy-four lowboy trailer. The thing I think we're gonna vote on next is replacing a nineteen ninety-two vehicle. Couple of the pickups we had were two thousand eleven, two thousand and one. So I know some of these vehicles, when you think two thousand eleven, that's twelve years old, but. Like Mr. Preister was saying, you start putting heavy loads, pushing snow twenty-four seven, these vehicles eventually. Need to be replaced, so. And I, and I appreciate, Dave, everything you've said. I, I think our street department down here has always provided us good accurate information on trying to describe, you know, vehicles and the condition they're in. Why they need to be replaced. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilman Burns?
No, and I really do, I appreciate um, Council President Cook and. Councilmember Preister, um, and I also really appreciate your responses, Dave, too. Um, and I'm just asking, because I just think that it's also hel- helpful for the public, you know what I mean? And, and I don't mean this as a criticism, but if it's possible. Can, is, when we're, we are replacing vehicles, because, eh, you know, in our agenda packets, it does add up to. You know, I mean, I just, calculating those items, it's like five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, you know? And, and to me, that is a lot of money. But if there's just a way to get maybe a, hey, this is what it's replacing. You know, this is what this serves as. I mean, even if it's just brief, so if somebody is looking at this, that they know, you know? Um, uh, rather than. It, because otherwise then maybe it just looks like we're buying new vehicles, you know what I mean? And that's it. So, not a, not a, a harsh criticism or anything of anybody, just trying to be constructive and. And just thinking about someone who may not be in our spot or something, so.
I, I just made note of the comments that you had, and we will work towards that in the future.
So, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? On sixteen C? Okay, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Okay, we have a motion by Cook, second by McCaw, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen D authorized the purchase of a thirty-five ton detachable air ride trailer from Kaufman Trailers for the street department. In an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Next mayor make motion to approve item sixteen D.
Motion by Casey, second by Preister, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen E approved the purchase of five heat pumps from M M C Mechanical Contractors. Replacing pumps in the fifteen ten Wall Street building in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw?
Thank you, Mayor, I make a motion, we approve sixteen E. Second.
Motion by McCaw, second by Cook, comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, my comments, how old are the existing units, Dave?
I don't know for sure, uh there's a great number of heat pumps in that building and what we're doing is trying to. Go through and replace the older units and put in more efficient units and uh improve on the uh operations. Of how they were installed, but I I can't tell you a a an age, I wish I could, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm assuming they're all the original ones, which is probably only eight years old. Maybe it just seems, did we get? Cheap ones to begin with, and it's this is before your time and I'm not being critical, but. I would assume these mechanical things would have some kind of warranty and we would have gotten good quality originally. But I don't know that, and apparently these, and I trust whoever's been assessing them. They are worn out and we do need to replace apparently these, and we've got more coming, is that accurate?
Uh yes, I the I'm sure the warranty period is over on, you're probably right when the building was remodeled. There's something like eighty heat pumps in that building, which to me is an astounding number for that.
Eighty?
Eighty, eight zero.
Whoa.
And um and it's just going through and making them more efficient and getting the ones that are. I mean, they're operating, but there are maintenance issues, so we're replacing those and getting better units.
Boy, I wish I had known more about that when we were building that building. Eighty of them and they're all wearing out in this short a time. I have a heat pump at home and I had a ten-year guarantee on it. Had a couple things go wrong and they fixed it and didn't charge me, but this is a whole different story.
Yeah, these are all, I'm sorry, these are all like ceiling mount units, these are not like the unit in your backyard, but they're more of a a smaller. Version of that, but essentially they do the same thing.
Okay, well, thank you for cleaning up the mess.
Any other questions on sixteen E? Motion by McCaw, second by Cook, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between four S A and the city of Bellevue for use of Aspen Park ballfields. Beginning March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four to October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. In an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I sent to all the council members and staff some information. I went out over the weekend on Saturday and visited with probably forty-some people living in the area and. Another twenty park users and I just wanna say it was a nice Saturday afternoon and I enjoyed being in the park and. Visiting with people uh to Public Works and Parks, people were very positive about. The park, they loved living near it, they loved having the activities there. And overall, they were very happy, uh even aside from that, they also commented, they appreciated the police service. They commented unrequested by me, I didn't ask anything about other services. But they liked the trash collection, they liked the street plowing, people were very pleased for the most part with the city. Which was very encouraging and kind of what I expected. There were concerns though, and I will just highlight the two main ones, one is. That they were raising the issue of whether the city should be doing this. And whether somebody could be making money off of the city versus. The city using these funds in their own coffers, I don't think people have. Accurate numbers, but I don't know the numbers, so this is a good opportunity with some folks watching at home. To maybe correct that, I don't know if the applicant is here and I don't see them. So Mister Ristow, could you maybe enlighten us a little bit on whatever you can enlighten us on? But especially on the costs.
And I'm sorry, I I was out of town this weekend, so I didn't get a chance to talk to the applicant about attending, so I'll take that one, but we did get some answers. On like the revenue, they're gonna have more particulars on what type of revenue they they bring in versus what the cost is. To do that, so I think there was a comment that for a tournament, tournament, they thought they were making thirty-five hundred dollars per team. That's a pretty high tournament level, um so I've got a grandson that plays there, comes in to play the four S A. So well aware of what their team plays and what they what they pay to register team. The high end would be like fifteen hundred for a tournament, but then that tournament sponsor is paying for all the officials. Plus any field maintenance, so they incur those costs within that fifteen hundred, um so if. The backside, I guess, when you think should the city run this, well, we'd have to put a field director down there, I'd have the officials, I mean, it would be an. Basically a nightmare for us, and it would, then we'd have to expand it into. Multiple age groups, which this tournament pretty much keeps it within a certain age group, so we're really, we would have a tough time managing that ourselves. But when it comes to four S A, what our master fees or what we charge them off of, and I think it's two grand is what we. We put put on them and basically they help, they maintain the field, so. We still mow once a week out there, but if they wanna put an additional mower out there uh prior to the tournament, so if you had heavy rain. They'll mow it with their own equipment, they drag the the infield on their own. We come out, I think, maybe every other week and we'll drag the field just for our own purpose to make sure it's maintained, but they will drag that field with. Uh and that's at their cost during the tournament, so uh the equipment they use to drag the field, mow, those are all their their. Um resources are not ours, I think there was a comment, they were using our mowers and our. Uh A T Vs, those are theirs, the only thing we allow them to do is store that in one of our sheds. Um and that's just part of the agreement, so they've got it on site, we don't want them leaving it outside, um it'll probably have a tendency to walk off, so. Uh you're gonna find this really interesting, ever since four S A went in there too, our vandalism in the park has dropped dramatically because they're they're there a lot. So it keeps a lot of the um, um I don't wanna say riffraff, but a lot of the vandalism is virtually disappeared because it's a very active park, so you don't have idle. Idle hands, idle minds out there without any public out there, but from a cost standpoint, um we don't really get into. How much they make, we've never really looked at that, because the risk is there, so if they don't fill their tournament. Uh they still gotta pay their officials, they still have to drag those fields, pay somebody to drag those fields. Uh give out their trophies, whatever, so if they don't have enough in their coffers, then that's their problem, we don't wanna inherit that. Uh we've had some discussion internally, if we wanna raise our 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 fees, uh we certainly would look at that. We have a similar agreement with B J S A on another field, um can we charge them the same amount, same agreement, they do the same thing. So it's, we don't look to gouge anybody within that. Um you know, but if it's something that we need to reevaluate, then should we increase our fees? We certainly would take a hard look at that, but I think they're not, they're not making an excessive profit on on our time, so. I don't know if that's the 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 question, but we feel pretty good about our agreements with four S A as well as B J S A. And hold them accountable, um if the condition of the field, if um the trash isn't taken out or. Something's damaged out there, they hear from us immediately and they've been very responsive and take care of that, and I think the same goes for the public, if the public has issues. I read through some of your notes where you've got A T Vs running through in other parts of the park, cars coming in late at night. Those are things that we can't staff at twenty-four seven with our police department, but if somebody was to call, we do. We do respond, I've seen on our incident reports when an A T V is out there riding around in the park. By the time our guys get there, they're long gone, but um. And we're just always gonna encourage the residents, if they see something happening, if somebody's out there at night, it's after. It's when the park should be closed, is always call nine-one-one and they'll they'll dispatch one of our units. Think you also had a question about um our entry, only having one single entry, and is that a problem? So when we look at Baldwin, we look at McCann, we look at Hayward, those are all single entries. Uh we prefer not to put a second exit in because then that would create this constant loop within the parks that you're controlling them coming through one. I don't think we've had a problem getting an emergency vehicle in there in our police department. Um I I think back when the pool is active in there, I think that had actually more traffic than the tournaments did, so. We haven't seen like this giant quagmire in there, but it's something always worth monitoring, and I think we've got a pretty good control over that. You know, we don't feel uncomfortable with this, and the four S A is very respectful to work with on on getting things done. I've been there for the tournaments with my grandson, I don't see any interaction that would be negative with the surrounding. Surrounding houses, they've always been really decent, so if there's an issue. And I think this year, Dave, I think we talked this morning, we we can get one complaint this year from the public out there, so. Year before, we heard quite a few different things, it's been relatively quiet for us this year. I've answered your questions on that, but um.
You you answered a number of them and I I appreciate that, uh particularly the equipment, the uh. Picking up of of the trash has been for the most part good, but there were some times when things were left and. Uh one of the complaints was critters getting into some of the leftover food, so if we could make sure. That the trash is removed right away rather than left there, and some of it could be too. From other people using it and putting food containers there.
It's an active park, I was, when they made a comment that people were coming in there at seven, th- this uh tournament teams are not coming in till ten. So the seven AM arrivals aren't tied to the team or guys that are out there setting up the field, so. You have a lot of people coming into the park that aren't really related to the tournament, it's kind of interesting that we've got that type of traffic. You know, don't worry as much in the morning as I do, more so in the evening, um I've seen. Ken's groups driving through a lot of our parks late at night, um so they they do go through and monitor, so if we got people there after hours, but. Uh I'm not sure what's driving the seven seven AM traffic, but it's not tied to the tournament, um there was a mention about um. A sign for the closing, and I I swear there was one out there, so we're gonna go, I didn't get a chance to drive out there today, but if. If we're missing a park hour sign, we'll make sure we get a park hour sign up there and. Uh our guys are really good about getting the trash out, um got a call last week, for example, they thought that we weren't removing them in one of the neighborhoods we annexed. And I just drove through that on that road the day before, and somebody had stuffed a bunch of large like boxes into the garbage. That's kind of an anomaly when people, they they use a trash can, so. Susan, I think your husband Rudy was still doing Saturday morning trash removal in certain neighborhoods, so these guys are out there on a regular basis, when they think that we're. Ignoring it, sometimes it's uh you get a heavy usage or maybe just people dumping their trash there, but our guys are really good about getting it out there, but. We certainly would keep an eye on that, make sure that that's a problem, that we address it, so.
Good, and the sign for the park hours was one that was a a concern.
Did you walk through there, and did you go down to the park?
Yes, oh yeah.
That sign's not there at all, or?
I don't remember seeing it, it it might have been there, I wasn't specifically looking for it cuz I was in the park. And then I walked the residence and I didn't go back into it to verify.
We'll ke- we'll we'll take a look at that, um I think there were a couple other things just from a maintenance standpoint for the frisbee golf. Um and there was a comment about the poison ivy on a fence, now if it's their fence. Even though it's facing our side of the park, we're gonna want them to remove it off of their fence, but if it's. On our trees, uh we'll certainly make sure that our guys, uh we've had that in some other neighborhoods where. If it's on their property, we don't like to spray their property, so if it's on the back of their, if it's our fence, we'll certainly knock it out, but. We've gotta look at that, I thought we looked at that frisbee hole last year, and I thought the way it was angled doesn't like angle towards the house, but if. If it was, Dave and I were laughing, if it was us throwing a frisbee, it would be in their backyard, but we'll certainly look at that and see if that needs to be modified to keep them out of their backyard and. You know, it's. I I don't think in all, when you look at the amount of people that use that frisbee golf too, it's just phenomenal how much how much activity they get in there too, so. If they're being disrespectful to the neighbors while they're out there, we certainly would love a call on that if something's happening out there and. We'll we'll address that to the best of our ability, but again, we didn't take any complaints last year on that, so but we will take a look at that, I think it's hole seven you wanted us to look at.
Right, hole seven and then hole six that needed some repairs that I outlined, so. It was useful information on the things that could be dealt with, and I appreciate that staff through you. Are going to be addressing those concerns, one of the issues was the concession or restroom building too. And it's apparently not operable, the plumbing or I I don't know if it's even able to be used or the condition. But people were concerned that it's just sitting there and not usable.
That's one, and that's one of the requirements we had for four S A, so they pay for the porta potties that come in there, so they they bring them in, they pay for them and they. Clean them on a regular basis, so we would watch that if those porta potties got um overused, we'd certainly have a conversation, but that. That building that was an old concession stand with the restroom, the restroom doesn't does not work, it's not functional. It's something we could certainly look on if we feel like that would be an improvement to the park, that we would address that. Um it's not on our radar, it's just, it's like a utility shed for us right now. Some of the equipment that had some um damage to it, Jim's looking at taking that, they've already roped that off where the some of those were really unsafe to be on, so.
Good.
Got four guys that are certified in park equipment, so they've roped that off, so we'll be looking to remove some of those. And then the discussion will be, what do we do to replace that, so um you know, it's on our radar to try to address that here in the short term, so maybe something in the. Spring we would do that, but right now it's all roped off and um some of that was some pretty aggressive damage, so.
Yeah, I I imagine some abuses were happening to make some of that.
That could be, so but.
But it's also plastic and plastic wears and it's easily abused too.
You know, and as we've talked about this, so we prioritize, like if you go to Faulkner Park, which isn't too far from this park, uh we made. Uh major improvements in that this year, it's a beautiful park, some of the equipment we put in. That was one of our top priorities and n- now we're shifting to take a look at this and say, what do we have to do over here, but. You know, you take them all down the line, um this, we'll see if we can escalate this over something else and try to address that for them, cuz it's still a really good park, so. Gonna make sure we maintain that, but.
Additionally, I I would question what you said about the tournament starting at ten o'clock. I believe last year they were starting at earlier than seven, and we. Because of complaints adjusted their time back to eight. But one of the people living near the entrance told me that on a Sunday, he had a stroke. And he had to call for an ambulance and the ambulance had problems getting through, he said they did make it. But it blocked traffic and it was going into the tournaments that were already starting, so. I don't know the times, I just know what people reported to me, he said that the rescue squad got him out of there, okay. But it was between seven and eight in the morning, he said, and the tournaments already had people in there and they were practicing.
Is that, that was this year?
That was this year.
Cause I know last, two years ago, they were much earlier, but we're holding them till ten AM start time. So I'll validate that this year, this this past season, um and I think if I remember right. David, it's ten AM, that may go into the early evening because of um.
And maybe I misunderstood him saying it was this year versus last year.
So they literally, they start at ten, they they may have arrival times for teams to come in at nine. But they don't have a seven or eight, um it's all ten AM start time, so the teams may come in to warm up around nine. But we wouldn't be in there at seven, and I think if that that was an issue two years prior.
Right.
Where they had an early morning start and we've pushed that way back for them, so.
Okay.
Um it's something again, that if there, we don't think this is happening, but if we feel like there's something. Um out of the extraordinary there, we'll certainly address it with them to make sure that's not occurring.
All right, if if it's after eight, eight-thirty, that's not so much a problem, it was just the early one, and if it's already been addressed. Then I can let people know that too.
By the time we get to eight o'clock in the summer. By the time we get to eight o'clock in the summer, there's no lights on those fields, so they wouldn't be playing, I mean, even by seven because it's treed in there too, that where the sun sets, it starts, you start to lose your perimeter lighting. So, they're, in the summer hours, they're not gonna be there past eight, but I think a lot of times they wrap up earlier, so they're not going into the dark because we don't have lights out there either, so.
The other issue was running stop signs, speeding, excessive traffic and parking on the grass. They asked if at least the police could drive through occasionally or if the people running the tournament could police or make sure that people know the rules and are following them.
Well, and we've had some discussions with four S A and they do, like if they're parking in the grass, they go out and have them move. There's been some discussions on where the concrete is. We have somebody that says that they shouldn't park, they're one of the neighbors, but that's where we want them to park. So they're not allowed to park on the grass. Now, four S A will police that. But we do have some neighbors that call and V P Ds are pretty quick and we've heard that they've got people off, so if they're not parking in the right place, you know, the running of the stop signs and things like that, if they're there, they're certainly going to address it. Doesn't necessarily mean it's tied to the tournament either, so you got people coming and going, but that's something we can certainly have. If we have big tournaments on a weekend, our guys can come in and check early or something along that line, just kinda in and out occasionally. But they do, if they get a call, they do come down and respond if somebody's parking in the grass or.
Some of that concern was for for the kids in the area and I think sometimes it, like you say, may even be the residents. They get frustrated because they're backed up from other cars going in to the park and so when they get a chance, so we don't know who it is, but the request was really, can the police come down there? If we wait to call, by the time they get there, the person's already gone and clear out of the neighborhood. So, early in the the season, having some presence may help deter things.
Once we get their tournament schedule, we'll just have the chief put that on a special and they'll, they'll do their drive-by or drive-through, so they'll they'll put special attention to it early and maybe that'll help accommodate some of that.
Okay, overall, I didn't talk to everybody down there, but I did get to a sizable number of people that are in the immediately impacted area and not one person said they don't want the tournaments. They liked parts of it, they liked that kids were using the park, that they had ballfields to play on. One of the things they especially appreciated was the ballfields look good and they're saying, we're glad for some attention because the pool's been sitting vacant for so long. What's gonna happen to that? Why are we kind of back here forgotten about? So, what we can do, I think, I know it's gonna be expensive removing that, but they were asking if it's not ever gonna be replaced, if it can't be used, can we get rid of them, put something good in there?
And we haven't, haven't, I mean, we wanna take it out. We didn't budget it this year, but it's like, what do we do with that? So, do you remove it and haul it off to the dump or do we backfill that? We've had, we haven't had those discussions, but that will get addressed in this coming year here as to what what do we do with the old pool and then what do we do with the site itself? Because that's a pretty big footprint. Somebody has mentioned like we should put a skateboard park or something, but I don't think our legal would like the liability, so.
Yeah, that was one of the comments. In fact, I left some cards on people's doors that weren't home and I got calls back over the weekend. And one of the calls today said, well, why can't you put in a roller skating park and then in the winter flood it like they do down by Back to the River in the new park in Omaha? And I thought, that's kind of a nice idea, but the cost of it, putting that in, doing it, is all part of needing to get in the C I P and planning for the future. But I I think getting rid of the old one, trying to figure that out and not waiting much longer after it's been this long already would be helpful for the folks and they see that we're responsive.
Yes, I agree with that.
All right, I think those were most of the concerns. I I know there were some and those may not be able to be addressed, but the, it would be good if we could get some closer numbers and figures that I could show people.
Sure.
That, rather than the rough ones that that I got, so we have some accurate numbers. And I don't know when we might be able to get those.
I think, maybe I'll shoot this over to you. So it's like four S A, I think they had fifteen teams, eight through fourteen and twenty-three, twelve games with four S A and eleven with Saint Columbo. Total, I think, for the year was ninety-one games. So I'll I'll send over what they, they just talked about what their schedule was, how many, how many games they had. And I'll see if they can give us anything on their financials, but again, so, you know, whatever they charge their their teams to play or in a tournament, we don't weigh that part. What we look at is what's in our master fee schedule for what we get back to keep our fields in good shape. And they actually, so the partnership, those fields are, and I'm gonna agree that those fields are better maintained since they they help out on that. So, like I said, during a rainy season, that field can blow up within days and if they've got a tournament, they'll come back out and mow where we may not have it in our cycle for the next week. It's very noticeable that they keep that at a, on a high level, which is nice. So that's part, but they do that part and all those things are on their dime. So they're not using any of our equipment, we have no cost associated with it. Like I said, the bathrooms, the trash, and there's been times like at night when they leave after a tournament, they may not take the trash out, but they come back the next morning and take it out. So it's, you know, whether they're tired or they didn't have the right vehicle, whatever, but they're they're generally really good about that and that's something that Jim's group keeps an eye on to see that they're maintaining that. So it helps keep our park in really good shape, but if there's issues with that, we'd certainly address it, so.
I think Dave wanted to add something?
Yeah, I did speak with one of the representatives of four S A after we met today and he said typically tournaments charge in this area depending on, you know, the age group and then the competitiveness necessarily of the tournament, between five and seven hundred dollars per team. Your your higher competitive is probably a little more and then the lower units are are, would be lower. And he said one thing that that they do in particular, and I think it's kind of common, is that they do not charge admission. So they can't recoup any of their money through admission either or gate fee. So if you come to watch a game, you just walk in and watch the game without paying a fee as a spectator.
So they're only, they're not selling concessions or anything else, their only income is to charge per team?
Yeah, I didn't ask particularly about concessions, I'm not sure if they do that or not.
So when I've been, there there is no, when I've been down there, there's no concessions on, they have no place to sell it out of. But there's, they're not selling it out of a cool or anything, so nothing on a side sale for them.
They'd actually have to have a city permit for that, wouldn't they?
More than likely. There you go, surely tell me if I'm right.
Okay, so if we're looking at five hundred dollars, that's per team, you say?
Yeah, between five and seven hundred dollars is kind of the average in this area.
Okay.
And they could potentially pay, they could be playing three to five games on a weekend for that five hundred dollars.
Yes.
And with that, they have to pay for the officials for each one of those games. So that comes out of their tournament fees as well as any field maintenance, so they kind of get assessed to drag the field because they pay for that, so there's not a lot left. When you think about it, it's not like they're raking in the coal, but probably so they stay competitive to get teams to play there.
And it's helpful to know that, I I wasn't aware, but we have the same contract with B J S A and they're another youth organization that has athletics here in Bellevue, so that's helpful too. I think that's everything on my list. I would like to see more numbers and and get some of those, but other than that, I think that's it for me. Thank you. I appreciate the extra information.
Well, we'll follow up. You gave us a lot of feedback from your your weekend tour, so we'll follow up with all that and I'll keep you posted on that, so.
Okay.
Any more questions on sixteen F?
It was a lengthy conversation, but I appreciate the indulgence and the neighbors certainly appreciate having somebody there listening to them and getting some responses. Code enforcement's already been down and cleaned up some things and now more is happening. They're gonna feel like we know where they are again.
Thank you.
They they were very complimentary. They did appreciate when there were concerns, they would call and Parks was right there. That was a a highlight from a number of people.
Very good team.
They are, thank you.
Okay, that's sixteen F. I'm just gonna read it again so we remember what we're voting on. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between four S A and the city of Bellevue for use of Aspen Park ballfields beginning March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four to October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars. A motion by Casey, seconded by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the S R P Douglas Law Enforcement Academy interlocal agreement, which would allow Metro Community College to become a member of the academy. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen G.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the United States Postal Service for the request by the U S P S to have a Bellevue police detective on their task force. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the renewal of the operative I Q software licensing agreement for a three-year term from November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three to November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. November report will be attached to the December fifth meeting packet. Put those in the record, we have them in the record, I should say. Item eighteen, we have no closed session. I'll take a motion to adjourn for nineteen. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Casey. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great, safe holiday.